Annual reorganization meeting, the first meeting after town election. And my first order of business is to read a letter from the town clerk's office. And it reads, "I, Patrick J. Ward, Town Clerk of the Town of Brookline, duly qualified in acting as such and having custody of the records hereby certify that at the May 3rd, 2016, annual town election held in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 1, Helen Chalupski, Susan Wolf Ditkauf, and David Pollak were elected members of the school committee for the Town of Brookline. I further certify in accordance with Mass. General Law, Section 41, Section 15, that on May 5th, 2016, Helen Chalupski, Susan Wolf Ditkauf, and David Pollak were sworn to the faithful performance of their duties as members of the school committee for the Town of Brookline." Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's also my understanding that, David, you were also elected to as a town meeting member.
This is true.
Very good. Congratulations, too.
As is Ms. Stone, as is Ms. Stone was reelected to town meeting.
Ms. Stone, congratulations. All right.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Barbara was reelected?
Congratulations.
Anybody get married? Any children? Okay.
Well, the next order of business, as the superintendent, I'm going to ask for nominations for the office of chairman. And what happens, we, once the committee elects the chair, then I turn the gavel over to the new chair, and they, they take care of the remaining actions of the night's meetings. So at this time, the chairman and the vice chairman ought to be elected for a one-year term by a majority of those members present. And that, unless a vote is taken to the contrary, no member may serve as chairman for more than two consecutive one-year terms. I ask for nominations for the office of chairman. Lisa?
I'd like to nominate Susan Wolf Ditkauf to serve as chairperson of the school committee.
Is there a second? Beth? Discussion? Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Connolly. Did you want to embellish on your nomination? Hello? I want to say first that I support the nomination of Susan Wolf Ditkauf for chairman of the committee, and she may be upset to hear that. But, but we do, in order, given what you just read to us about our policy, we need to suspend Article III, section of Section B of our policy manual, which states that no member of the school committee may serve as chair for more than two consecutive one-year terms. Before making an actual motion on that, I think it's important to point out that the school committee has taken the same action at a similar junction in its past, specifically when we were bringing on a new superintendent at the same time that an experienced chair was finishing their second year in that position. That was the case just before I joined the school committee, when Bill Lupini was hired and Marcia Heist agreed to serve a third year as chair in order to provide the smoothest transition for the incoming superintendent and also for the school committee. So I'm pretty sure I speak for every member of this committee when I say how very grateful I am that Susan is willing to continue in this role as we bring on Andrew Bott as our superintendent and look forward to a great transition year. So I move that the school committee temporarily suspends Section B, Article III of our policy manual to allow for a vote on the election of Susan Wolf Ditkauf to serve a third year as chair of the school committee. The suspension of the policy will be in place no longer than one year from now or the next reorganization meeting of the school committee, whichever period is shorter.
Is there a second? Lisa? Second? Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Thank you very much. Vote passes. So now we go back to the vote on the first motion, which is to appoint Susan Wolf Ditkauf our chairperson for the 2016-2017 school year. All those, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstention. One abstention.
We don't have to do a roll call vote. I mean, it's fine. We're all here.
You don't, you don't have to do a roll call.
We can, we can. Congratulations. I have the honor.
Thank you, Dr. Connolly.
Not only putting that nameplate in place, but handing you the gavel to continue the meeting. Congratulations.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm, I am honored to serve this committee because I, each of you is an incredible individual and an incredibly functional group. And, and there aren't many people that I would do this with or for, and you all are on that list, so thank you. I'm also incredibly grateful to, to the community for giving us three more years, and obviously we're all doing this for the kids. That's why we all show up, even though fewer than half of us have kids in the system. That's why we all show up every day, and every morning, and every night. And so, so thank you to, to the community, and thank you to the, to the teachers and the staff who, who all serve the kids with us. With that, I will take nominations for the office of vice chairman. Are there any names to be put into nomination? Ms. Scotto?
It is my pleasure to nominate David Pollak. I have known David for a goodly number of years, since I was his son's sixth grade teacher at Frisco. As a parent, it was very clear that not only was David interested in his own child, but in the welfare of all children. He was active and involved. He was curious about what was happening in the classroom, what we were teaching, and how students felt about their learning. It was obvious he had a curious and active mind and cared deeply about children in schools. As I am sure you know, these are important characteristics in someone who is making decisions about the education of children in Brookline. Unlike many people, David goes one step beyond just believing in them. He acts on his beliefs by getting involved with organizations that matter to him and ones where he feels his expertise will be useful. For many years, he served on the board of Brookline Elementary School, as well as on the town's building commission. For the past three years, he has been on our school committee. And just two days ago, as we said earlier, he was elected to town meeting. Clearly, he knows better than most that if you want to make change, you can't just talk. You had better get to work. Now, it just so happens that the school committee is involved in some building projects. So we were delighted when, three years ago, David, an architect with building commission experience and know-how, joined the group. Indeed, he has used his expertise to our advantage from the moment he sat down at the table. In the next few years, it is obvious that school buildings will be one of the primary concerns of this committee. It's important for us that David will be in a leadership position so that he can direct the flow of work around our capital project, projects, from a vantage point that will allow him to be aware of the many elements that must be juggled if we are to keep multiple walls in the air. In case you have forgotten what I said about David at the beginning and think I am nominating him mostly for his architectural marvel, let me remind you that he has a fine sense of humor, a winning smile, an amazing mind, a gift-for gab, and excellent tolerance for all of our individual and collective quirks. For all of the reasons I have mentioned, it is my pleasure to nominate David Pollak as vice chair of the school committee.
Well, well said. Is there a second? Mr. Chang, seconded. Are there any other names that anyone wishes to place into nomination? Mr. Pollak, you may now place any other names into nomination. Any other discussion? Do you have a, a motion and a second? All right. If there's no further discussion, we will move to a roll call vote. Ms. Quinn, will you please poll the committee?
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Yes.
I will abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Connolly, would you like to do the honors?
Yes, I would. David, give me a name tag.
A high-tech.
Awesome. Very good. Congratulations. Thank you.
All right. We're going to keep going.
May I just briefly?
Oh, do you want to say anything?
Sure. I just want to thank Ms. Scotto for those lovely words and accept with excitement and energy and, most of all, humility, the confidence that you guys have placed in me. And I look forward to the job.
You have big shoes to fill, Mr. Pollak, as Scotto was an outstanding vice chair. Big, big shoes. We now have to ask for a vote to appoint the executive assistant to serve in the office of secretary of the school committee. Are there any nominations?
Can I just move what you just said?
Yes. Well, are there any nominations for individuals?
Yeah, Robin Coin. Robin Coin.
Well, yes, Robin Coin. Thank you.
I nominate, didn't you say?
Well, we have to, I'm going to ask for a vote to appoint.
Enthusiastically nominate Robin Coin for this position.
All right. Is there a second? Ms. Scotto?
Yes.
Is there any discussion?
What was the question?
Other than, I think there were five hands that shot up to second it.
Ms. Coin, we should not, not only note our own appreciation of you, but Mr. Ward was incredibly impressed by your tenacity to make sure we followed all of the rules and all of the laws in all of the order that we were supposed to be following them. And I said, "You have no idea what it's like about executive session minutes and regular committee minutes." Robin is on top of everything and, and manages to avoid problems before we were even aware that they might become problems. She heads them off of the pass and saves us from ourselves when dealing with the many, many laws and, and regulations that govern us. So we've just been such an extraordinary asset to this committee and to the district, and we're so grateful to, I'm, I'm grateful to you, and we hope you will accept our appointment if it's, if it's approved. So this doesn't say I have to call for a roll call vote. Can we just vote this one? Excellent. All right. All those in favor of appointing our executive assistant, Robin Coin, to serve in the office of secretary of the school committee, please raise your hand. All right. It's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Coin. Okay, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is administrative business. Our calendar is on page three. For some reason, it feels like we're nearing the end of the year, and all that's happening is more events are getting added and the type font is getting smaller. We're having more and more. We're very excited about a slate of not only our internal committee and subcommittee meetings, but also a slate of building project meetings on various subjects, which the superintendent will talk about in more detail, but our three important ones are up here, May 18th, May, June 8th, and June 13th. The only other one that I'll add to that is the June 7th, yes, meeting, joint meeting with the Board of Sluckmen? We're still waiting to hear from a couple of people. We are trying to schedule a, a joint meeting with the Board of Sluckmen on buildings in particular, in high school in particular, that's trying to get slated for June 7th. We'll see if we have a quorum. So stay tuned on that. Ms. Chalupski?
So, two things. One, on June 7th, there will be the need to vote and sign a document for the devotion school. Hopefully, that change order will be all initiated and done by that time. So, so that's one.
So please get back to Robin. If you haven't.
That's a school committee meeting, June 7th.
Right. So a school, right, so it's a cap, does it have to be a full school committee or capital committee?
You just have to have a majority.
It's a school committee meeting.
It's a school committee meeting. Okay. So we will have a, a meeting on June 7th, and there will be a quorum, apparently, at which we will.
I won't be here.
At which we will.
But you do have to.
Sign and vote. Keep going.
So, yeah, I have one other request, suggestion. This year, unlike in other years, it seems like all the schools are having their graduations on the same day, almost at the same time. And it makes it very difficult if, if they want school committee representation there, especially if a few people can't do certain days. So I don't know if there's any poss, it hasn't always been like that. Usually it's been spread out over three days and, you know, different times so that, that it was more, made it a little easier. I don't know if this was just by chance, or there was a reason for it.
We did, we, we identified the days that were available. It was at Wednesday and Thursday of that week. We did remind the principals that school committee does attempt to attend the graduations, but for ever reasons. I think one is, one has picked Thursday, and the others have picked Wednesday. So it's two dates, but there's only one on the one Thursday date. But because of the school functions, they all felt they needed to do Wednesday.
Okay. Are there any other additions to the calendar?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Glover?
I'd just like to add the May 26th recognition ceremony for steps of success to the calendar.
Great. May 26th.
Yeah.
And is that at the Teen Center?
Yes.
Okay. Terrific. That's always a wonderful event if people can attend.
I don't think I've gotten a lot of notices yet.
We, you might get one in the mail. There was a mailed notice.
Sixteen.
Any other additions to the calendar? Okay, so we just, we just need to figure out the June 7th one, and who can be here. We need a quorum in person to vote and sign for the devotion project. Yes?
It's a brief meeting, so will we morning, evening, you know?
Well, ideally, evening, if we're going to try and meet with the Sluckmen that evening. If we're trying to do a joint session with the Sluckmen that evening, June 7th.
That's a different, that's a potentially more broad agenda, right?
Right. I'm just saying, if we're trying to get everybody, exactly right. So if we're trying to get everybody here, though, sometimes it might be easier to get them all here at one time. But we'll see. Whenever people can come, let's put it that way. So, move that forward. Okay, good. Anything else? All right, we do have a consent agenda, pass record, April 28th, which I will, and is there a motion? Mr. Chang, move.
Yes.
Any second? Any second? Ms. Stone, all those in favor? All right, it's unanimous. We now have subcommittee and liaison reports, and we are running 20 minutes behind. So with that in mind, Ms. Ram, finance.
No updates from last week, other than to say we have a meeting on May 16th, and in that meeting, we will cover student activities accounts, and we'll also look at our agenda for updating financial policies next year.
Any questions? Capital improvements, Mr. Pollak?
The capital, subcommittee meets a week from tomorrow, Friday morning at 8:00 in the building. And yesterday, there was a meeting of the devotion school building committee, which moved that project along and voted the next submission of the giant document package of drawings and specifications to the MSBA. And so that, that is winging its way tomorrow downtown for review. The sixty, the 60% construction document set was voted and is being submitted.
Questions? Additions? Curriculum, Ms. Chalupski?
I think I'm going to hold on mine till next time. We, we did meet and have a high school presentation today of their school improvement plan, but I think I'll just hold it till the 19th, if that's okay, and I'll do the ones on the 19th.
Okay.
Say it again? Then I can be more specific when I talk the next time.
Okay.
And our next meeting is on the 25th in the morning at 8:30.
Government relations? Ms. Stone?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have nothing to report.
Policy review, Dr. Jackson?
Per my update, last time, we have a, and on the calendar, we have a policy review committee meeting on May 12th, where we'll be discussing three financial-related policies, but no update otherwise.
All right. Any other liaisons or updates? Okay. Moving right along. Public comment. We have two people signed up for public comment, Catherine and Matthew Stewart. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
You have, you have three minutes.
Okay. Our question, our comment is going to be in the form of four questions, and we'd love to get responses. We'd like to know, can you confirm who on the board, including yourself, works for the philanthropy consulting group, Bridge Span? How much revenue does Bridge Span make from clients that are promoting education reform? What kind of education reform are, is Bridge Span promoting, or are those clients promoting? Specifically, is it of the high-stakes testing and data collection variety that appears to be an issue in dispute, in the dispute with the teachers union? And the fourth question is, what can you say to voters and parents like us to assure us that you are representing our interests and not the interests of Bridge Span in generating revenues from clients with a particular agenda?
So it's our policy not to comment, a public comment, but you have another two minutes if there's anything else you'd like to say.
When would we get a comment? And what form would that, that comment come?
Sure. If you have questions, you're more than welcome to email them to the committee, and we definitely try to answer as many as we can, if not all, emails from constituents. Do you have any? There's, there's another minute and a half. So this isn't really a time for public dialogue. You have another minute and a half, if there's anything else you'd like to say.
I just want to say that, I just want to say something.
So one second. If you'd like to sign up for public comment or speak after the next, we definitely will take you.
I think people have pre-spy.
If, if you wouldn't mind, if you wouldn't mind.
The record public dialogue doesn't exist here.
The record pilot, public dialogue does not exist.
Not during the public, not during the public comment period.
Email the backdoors of private, so there's no public dialogue.
Okay. So we have, you have one more minute, if you'd like to finish up.
Wow, this is very, I have my children, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Margot Stanton, you have, are you here? Okay, great. You have three minutes.
Hello, all. My name is Margot Stanton. I'm 14 years old and in eighth grade at Baker School. I've attended Baker since kindergarten and have grown up in the building. I'm now 24. In the past year, I've heard about, read about, and watched Brookline teachers work without contracts for over 200 days. In other school districts, the teachers walked out and went on strike. Brookline teachers care so much about our well-being that they continue to come to school every day. I've always known my teachers care about me and my peers, but as this entire situation plays out, I see how much they can do without for us in one piece. I've had so many teachers in the past nine years, all of them left me with memories to check. One unforgettable year was fourth grade. Not only did you learn fractions, decimals, and verbs, you learned about gender identity through classmates' spirits. My teacher, Ms. Bellah, led the way, for being positive in understanding and understanding. Today, I am so close with all members of that class. We are very much connected from everything that happened that year. Another teacher wished me to achieve what he knew I could, when I did myself as Mr. Denman. In sixth grade, I started off the year strong in social studies, but my grades began to fall in second quarter. Mr. Denman told me I was an A student, and he pushed me to work hard. I began learning so much and doing well. Social studies is now one of my strongest and favorite subjects. And I find myself using the skills that kicked up from Mr. Denman in all of my classes. My teacher, Ms. Bayla, who is looking thick and thin, always believed me and supported my decisions. I connected with her on day one and learned so much in her classroom and from her words. She not only taught me the curriculum, but also about life and my outlook on the world. One of the main points our teachers are fighting for is the workload oversight committee. The committee would give our teachers a voice by allowing them to meet regularly, discuss what's best for students and teachers, and provide input on new district initiatives before their inputs. I personally believe this committee will give teachers the voice they need to advocate for themselves and of students. Our teachers spend hours a day on this, learning about us, the way we learn, and what we need to accomplish. As the school committee doesn't spend a lot of time in our schools and with us, how do they know what's best for us? We are a family in school, one that cares equally about each other and wants everyone to succeed. In school, we talk about what's happening with our students. All of us want to help in whatever way we can. In student council, ideas are being thrown out without wanting to hold signs outside and making posters to support our teachers. Helping my teachers is lying here today. I'm asking the school committee to trust our teachers, to listen, and to cooperate. I ask you to honor our teachers with a contract that is right and just.
Thank you, Ms. Stanton. That's all that is signed up for public comment. If there's anyone else here who wishes to make public comment, would you like to come up to the microphone and make whatever statement you wanted to make? Just tell us your name so we can put it down.
I just wanted to know about this, I'm already choosing a topic, conversation, but I'm surprised that public comment, there is no communication. I didn't know what to put down, but I was like, oh, and also, no talking. So it's kind of like, why do they, like, they, you know, it's like, you know, it's...
Okay. Thank you. Okay, that's all we have. Is there anybody else here who wishes to make public comment? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Connolly?
Again, I have a number of updates for the school committee since last week. Number two is the new, new administrative staff. It's a, it's a pleasure to make this announcement. I am pleased to announce a central office position funded from the FY16 school budget has now been filled. Leslie Ryan Miller has been offered the position of senior director for teaching and learning. It was our goal to have this position filled and in place prior to July 1st so that the senior director could assist with the transition of deputy superintendent for teaching and learning. It is anticipated Leslie will be available to begin sometime during the month of June. Dr. Fisher Mueller and her interview team interviewed nine candidates for this position. Leslie Ryan Miller worked for many years as a primary-level teacher for the Boston Public Schools. She has also planned and facilitated professional development and mentor support services for the new teachers while working for the Boston Public Schools Office of Professional Development. From 2009 to 2013, she served as director of teacher development and advancement by working for the Boston Public Schools Office of Educator Effectiveness, and for the past three years has held the title of director of school support. Dr. Fisher Mueller indicates her references were stellar, with people describing Leslie as collaborative, invaluable, and very effective in helping educators grow. We're very excited to have Leslie join our team, and I'm hoping, once we've filled all these other administrative positions, maybe one of our meetings in June, we can invite all these adminis, new administrators to be here to meet the school committee in the public. But we're happy to have Leslie on board, and we thank Dr. Fisher Mueller for coordinating that search effort. Job well done. The 2016 MCAS math testing will begin next week, and in your packet tonight is a letter I've sent home today to the parents of Brookline. During the April administration of the ELA portion of this year's MCAS testing, a number of families inquired about the possibility of opting out of the MCAS testing and what if any consequences there would be for opting out for their child or their school. This letter was sent to the families in advance of next week's math component of the 2016 MCAS testing. The letter explains to parents there is no opt-out provision in what the consequences are to a school and school district if even a small number of students chose not to participate in this mandated statewide assessment program. I have also included a frequently asked question attachment for the parents, in the parents' letter, and a... in an attempt to further help the parents fully understand the ramifications of not participating in the MCAS and/or PACS assessment programs in Massachusetts. That letter went out today and it's in your packet. I also have given you a traffic map of the Coolidge Corner area. And you have a copy of a letter that was sent to the project manager of the devotion project, Mr. Quigley. Because we are concerned about the additional, the need for additional traffic supervisors. At the current devotion school, we have two traffic supervisors, one at the corner of Stedman and Harvard and one in Harvard by the front entrance to the school. Now that we're moving to this new location, we feel we need at least four traffic supervisors. We're going to need one at the corner of Beacon and Harvard, the corner of Senna and Beacon, one on Marion Street where the traffic parent drop-up and pickup will occur. We also believe we will, at least for a temporary period of time, need one at Harvard and Marion because many parents and children will walk in from that side, that road also. I've talked to the chief, Dean O'Leary, and his budget does not have the capacity to add these two additional traffic supervisors to the FY17 budget. He indicated that he has a number of officers going through training. As a result, his overtime money is being fully expanded the first six months of the FY17 year because of a number of officers going through training, officers training school. Then I realized that the students in grades five to eight at the devotion school that are being transported to the old Lincoln School for these two years during construction, that transportation costs is being funded by the school project. So my letter to Mr. Quigley in the building committee, which I think perhaps will be presented at the next meeting, asks for their consideration of the cost of the two traffic supervisors for the K4 students to be funded by the building project. Dr. Quigley, Mr. Quigley said that he would certainly bring it to the building committee's attention and for a vote. The traffic supervisors make $22.50 an hour, we're talking about two hours a day. And over a period of 180 days, that is roughly $8,000 per supervisor. So $16,000 a year, $32,000 for two years timeframe. With the possibility that the fourth traffic supervisor on Marion and on Marion Street, in Harvard, the corner of Harvard and Marion, may only be a temporary need. So I wanted the school committee to be aware of this action. And I will let you know what the, what the position is of the building committee when they take a vote at the next meeting. Any, any questions or comments?
Dr. Connolly, is it the building commission that has final say on?
Building committee.
Building committee, they have control over?
Over the project monies.
Project monies, so it's, it's really whether or not the budget can support it, right? Thanks.
As you know, we have been spending a great deal of time in the past few weeks conducting interviews for several administrative vacancies or pending vacancies. I want to give you an update today on the status of those searches. The deputy superintendent for teaching and learning, our search committee completed a thorough review of the 47 applications received and identified eight candidates for initial interviews. The search committee began interviewing candidates on Friday, April 29th. And we actually had three interviews today and we have three, three next week. And one candidate has withdrawn, has received a job elsewhere. And we still hope to be on target to have the interviews completed by next week, identify the finals for second interviews and perhaps site visits. And it's still our goal potentially at our next meeting, which I believe is May 16th, to be able to hopefully announce the preferred candidate at that meeting, if not at the very next meeting. Things are moving very well and we have a very strong pool of candidates. The deputy superintendent for student services, the deadline for applications is tomorrow, May 6th. We are meeting with the search committee, again, of 12, 13 people. Both, we have a number of system-wide staff, principals, teachers, and parents on both committees. They'll be meeting on Monday afternoon to discuss the process and receive copies of all the applications for review. We hope to begin the interview process the week of May 16th. And we again hope to have that search completed sometime in early June. And our goal is to have both those very important positions filled before July 1st if possible. The Lincoln School principal search is also going very well. Again, they also had 47 applications and they identified eight candidates for interviews. They have completed those interviews and they have identified the finals for that position. And those interviews will be next week by the senior staff and we again would hope, if all goes well, we'll be able to announce the preferred candidate at the May 16th school committee meeting. I can't say enough about these broad-based committees of 12 and 13 people. They're putting a great deal of time and effort into the process. They're taking it very seriously. They're a great bunch of people to be working with. And I think the candidates are walking away very impressed with the people who represent Brookline. And in your packet tonight, there is your updated kindergarten registrations. Again, it's only been a week. I think we're at 495, I think it was 490 last week. And I also mentioned in the report that we had set a timeline for announcing the first round of acceptances for the staff materials fee program would be May 16th. And we, in looking at these numbers, we feel very confident that we can, we can achieve that, that date. And so those letters will be going out on May 16th. And you will see the breakdown of materials fee application, registration requests on that handout. At this point, I would sense that all the application, all the materials fee applications for kindergarten can be accepted. And as is the case in past years, the other grades, it depends on enrollment at that grade level. And I meant to bring my chart. We know we have two or three grade levels that really have a very, very high enrollment. One's at 704, one's at 696, and one's at, I think, 676. I think it's grade three, four, and six maybe. So we can't honor the other grade requests due to enrollment. But the kindergarten can all be honored, which is encouraging. Any questions? Yes, Beth.
So you can't honor the enrollment request, that is for new enrollments, not?
Oh, sorry, we have item number seven. And the, the report that I put in your packet has now been updated by Ben as of about an hour ago, I think. So Ben, would you want to come forward and give the schools committee an update? Maybe pass out that updated memo? This, this updates the information I gave you in your packet.
Do you need one from here?
So just a quick update on the building projects and communications around them. So as you have discussed earlier, the May 18th meeting on the ninth, update meeting on the ninth school should take place at the Pierce School Auditorium. We announced that last week at the school committee meeting. Now that's been scheduled publicly. The June 7th meeting, which you're trying to, joint meeting you're trying to schedule with the Board of Sleckman. There's also devotion school community meeting on June 8th. And then the BHS renovation and expansion, there'll be a community meeting, update meeting about that on June 14th as well. And what you have in front of you is just the outreach we're going to be doing to make sure the public, parents, families, guardians, town meeting members, community members are aware of those meetings so we can keep them apprised of the progress on those projects. And then how we're planning on updating the website, reaching out to those folks. How we'll use, how we'll seek or ask the PTO leadership to use their vehicles of communication to get out information to parents. How we'll also use principals to get out information to parents and families through their newsletters. We may ask a few of you to reach out to town meeting members as well. But the, the idea here is that we'll have ongoing communications to make sure folks are aware of those meetings and can be up to date on the building projects. The key words down here, which are sort of new and different, ongoing communications are the terms regular and consistent communications. So we hope to do a better job than we have earlier this year to make sure folks are aware of both the meetings, but then can attend and we'll make sure they are fully updated. And expect also that some of you, Mr. Pollack and Mr. Tidkoff, may be helping out with some of those meetings as well in terms of presentation or opening or comments, remarks, so that's all. Any questions, yeah?
I'm a little confused. In your, in the superintendent's report, it said June 13th and your document it says June 14th and I had June 13th now. So which day is it? Is it Monday or Tuesday?
It is, I need to double check here because you are right to catch that.
Monday.
June 13th.
Mr. Mason says, Mr. Lanna says it's Monday, says it's Monday.
Thank you, sir. Sorry about that error.
That's okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm sorry if I missed this when we discussed it last week. But could you just tell us a little bit about the structure of the public meeting on the, on the 18th? I just, because in a lot of community forums that I've been in recently, there are lots of questions about the night school process and I just wondered what people can expect out of that.
Sure, great question. So it'll be a few different parts. First, I think probably opening remarks from Mr. Tidkoff or Mr. Pollack, just to welcome folks. Then we'll go into an update on the need for, or a reminder of the need for the night school, enrollment and impacts and expanded place. Then we'll go into an update on timeline and process that we're, that we're all offering underneath at this point. Then go into an explanation of the site studies, which at that point will be almost underway. And may have a firm selected that, by that point, and if that's the case, we'll tell folks who that is. And then go into, because of the location of the meeting at Pierce School, we'll also go into a little more details about the village school concept because that's shifted over time, as you all know, from the one, you know, the one building. And also include other parcels, so we'll get folks an update on that. And then, I think at that point, I'm trying to think, I'm missing one, one agenda item. No, then there'll be questions and answers, basically, yeah.
I'm sorry to keep on doing this, but when you say "we," who, who is that going to be?
Questions, yep. We're all invited. We have not exactly determined, you know, which representatives in the school committee would be there, but also Kara Bruton will be there, I will be there, Dr. Connolly will be there. And, you know, we'll, similar to the way we did, we've done the public meetings or hearings before. Presentations, yeah, that sort of thing.
Okay, so the people who have done the presentations in the past of the various pieces you've just described will be doing those presentations?
Yeah, that's the plan right now.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
I think the notion was that we've already done them in South Brookline for those properties, but there hasn't been one, a community meeting in the North Brookline area. Is that basically it?
Yep, through the meeting with the South Brookline neighborhood at Temple Emmett, also the Parks and Recreation meeting as well. A lot of those questions, not, I mean, were addressed, answered, responded to. I haven't done one up here. And then also just really wanting to do a more regular update as progress is made, you know, this spring and then especially through the summer and the fall. Obviously, the summer updates will be, you know, electronic and the like, popping up through many meetings. But then, you know, certainly go into high gear in terms of when studies, studies return and are finished.
Sure. No, I appreciate the fact, I appreciate the fact that one's been organized for the, for North Brookline. And I know, I just think that, I just wanted to be clear about what people could expect when they were coming, who they were going to be hearing from specifically and whether or not they were, whether or not the people in charge of those various pieces would be the ones delivering it. That's also, to me, it's important that, that, that the people who have been in charge of those particular pieces of the process be the ones speaking about it publicly, only because you get into a game of telephone when you have someone interpreting what they've read or heard. And so I just want to keep it very, very clear for everybody.
And in terms of, like, the email communication and the website communications, we'll have that agenda. That's part of what will be in those communications, both in the email and then obviously referring to on the website as well.
So just, so on the, so who we're communicating with, the school committee, that's tonight now. PTO leadership, that's the superintendent, right?
In terms of who's doing it?
Yeah.
I'll probably, so we're having a meeting, a monthly meeting with the PTO leadership on Wednesday. We'll, you know, mention to them and then also make a request and give them some materials they can pass out or forward or crib from.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Sure, Ms. Stone.
I'm delighted that we can add Mr. Pollack to the list of town meeting members who have the ability to communicate from the school committee. And Mr. Pollack, your only obligation is to join the Town Meeting Member Association listserv so that you have that avenue.
Thank you for volunteering, Mr. Pollack.
Okay, good. It also strikes me that we should probably share this with the, at least the advisory committee. Sleckman probably have a copy of it already, or town administrator or so, but we, does someone want to send this to, I don't know, Carla? Right, adjust the date, but then probably we're sending to Sean and Carla, maybe?
We'll take, we'll take right there.
Okay. Great. All right, so any, anything else, Dr. Connolly? Okay, any other, any questions for the superintendent? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to school committee actions. So our first vote is on the nonparticipation in school choice. Hold on one second while I find that sheet of paper. The school choice law is, that contained in the Education Reform Act of 1993 presumes that each school committee will admit non-resident students under the school choice program unless there is a vote to the contrary taken by June 1st of each year following a hearing on this issue. We, the Brookline School Committee combined the hearing for this issue with the public hearing on the FY17 budget. And that hearing was held on March 17th, 2016. The historical position, and I believe the current position of the school committee has been that the way that the public schools of Brookline have participated in choice is through participation in the Metco program. The school choice reimbursement rate, because someone will ask, is roughly $5,000 per participant, or at least it was last year, I think it's more or less still the same, which is substantially less than the cost of educating one of our students. So with that, I will move that we, do I have a motion in here? Or just move that we not participate in the school choice program for the 2016, 2017 school year? So I will move it. Is there a second, Ms. Stone? Is there any discussion? This is something we do every year, so I don't anticipate discussion, but one never knows. Okay, all those in favor of the not participating? All right, it's unanimous. Moving on to agenda item 6B, approval of the Edco Collaborative Articles of Agreement as amended by the Edco Collaborative Board of Directors, proposed vote. Ms. Charlopski, do you want to introduce this?
I'm happy to. You actually have the full documentation in front of you, but I will save you from that somewhat to let you know that we've voted all the articles. The only changes here have to do with one, as I mentioned actually at our last meeting, allowing Wellesley to leave Edco because they determined they, they wanted to. And two, was the change of the date of notification of the collaborative. If we were to decide to, or we or any of the other communities decided to leave Edco, we would need to notify them by, or they would need to notify them by July 1st, I think it is? Of the prior year, before you wanted to leave. Of the prior year, before you wanted to leave. So those are the only two changes. The need for the vote is because the collaborative voted this already, but each school committee that's part of the collaborative has to vote in order for it to become effective, and then it gets sent to DISA to whatever they do with these articles. Are there any questions?
Will, do you want to move it?
I would definitely like to move to, to approve the Articles of Agreement as amended by the Edco Collaborative Board on, what day did we amend it? April 28th.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second? Mr. Pollack, we're seconded, okay. Is there a discussion or questions from Ms. Charlebsky?
Ms. Stone?
So, it feels like for the last couple of years, I've been the one asking when we're going to have a full and robust conversation about whether we should be continuing with our participation in Edco. There was the move, we decided to delay that conversation until we figured out how it was going after the move, and how much we were taking advantage, and I know there's been a lot of conversation about to what extent, given the growth here and the pressures on our own programs, whether we might want to start taking more advantage of some of the Edco programs. I know there are a lot of things that we have not yet discussed. I am personally very frustrated, given the cost of belonging to Edco, that we have not had those discussions, for whatever good set of reasons there may be, and I'm very uncomfortable in particular with voting to approve a change of a full year's advance notice, which basically...
It's not a full year, it's a half. Well, before you would have to notify them by December.
Half a year, right.
So it was a half year, yeah, this is a full year, correct.
So we now have to notify them a full year, which means you are obligated to pay a full year's membership fee after deciding to withdraw, and I find that difficult to swallow. So, with all of that, I think Edco does a lot of good things. It's not clear to me that it does a lot of good things for Brookline, given the cost, and so I plan to abstain from this vote.
That's fine. If I could just respond a bit, I don't think we want to have a full-blown conversation at this point, unless people do, but we've gone back and forth on this issue. It's $33,000 a year. What we get for it is new school committee orientation, we get job alikes for all of our senior staff, our principals, for, to be able to go and talk with other people in the community. There is the opportunity for the special education programs. I don't think that we are availing ourselves, or are we at this point? So both of those, we get member rates as opposed...
Just for the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. So there are a few students in the Edco programs, on those, in those programs, we get member rates as opposed to nonmember rates. I think those are the main reasons, I mean, there's superintendent, I think, it seems to me that it would be prudent to wait a year till our new superintendent comes in, see how he, you know, is able to possibly take advantage of it. Once more, we have new, all new people coming in too, in other positions, so that having these job alike groups may be even more important than they've ever been.
Dr. Schmuckler, Dr. Fisher-Miller, do you want to add to that? You don't have to, but I just thought if you wanted to.
I just want to let you know that actually when this did come up last year, we brought forward the numbers of the participation in Edco's move, that Brookline participation would drop, and in fact, in looking at the participation in professional development in 2013, 14, 15, it did not drop, in fact, it, the participants, I don't have the 2016 numbers with me right now, but that information.
So, just to build on that, I think they have improved some of their offerings too, so, and they are, they realize the distance and are attempting to do more long-distance type of learning. I don't know if we've had any of that.
So with their all-day workshops, it's not the case that we can assume that the distance is further for all of our educators.
I'm just trying to think if there was anything else so that I could add to, and there is school committee meetings, nobody's going right now, but Alan used to go, I went once in a while, where you get together with other school committee members from the other districts and talk about issues. So those, those are the basic things. Public advocacy has been in the past, it hasn't been that prevalent right now, there's not somebody leading the charge, unfortunately.
I'm not knowledgeable enough about our participation in Edco to know whether it's something we should consider withdrawing from or not consider withdrawing from, but I do appreciate Ms. Stone's comment about changes to the notification provision, if there's any possibility that we would consider at some point in the near future withdrawing from Edco. I don't know if we would or we wouldn't. So, for that reason, I'm apprehensive about approving that change, and I might even go further than Ms. Stone would go, and I would reject the change, not just abstain from the vote. As an alternative, what we could do, if we so chose, was to approve the other two changes and reject this one, or reject the one regarding the date.
It's only one change.
The two changes regarding Wellesley, and reject the change regarding the change in the notification.
Right. Let me explain a little bit more why the change. The issue has to do when the budget is set at Edco, it's not just a sort of frivolous, we need a years, but rather, the budget is set, the other districts then are, you know, end up taking up the slack. When Wellesley left, there was an issue of who was going to pay their share, and in the end, they didn't pay for the year that they waited out to leave. So it's, because they couldn't leave till we voted for them to leave, it's a very strange process, this, the collaborative process, but I think, you know, it has to do with finances and their ability to be able to count on what they're going to have or readjust the budget. Basically, that's the issue there.
Dr. Connolly?
As Helen said, the change makes sense for them. It's a very wise operation.
And for us, if we continue to be part of it, because other districts could do the same.
I might suggest, especially where a deputy superintendent in charge of student services is leaving, and we'll have a new person in that position, you may want to consider at some point in the coming year to invite Colleen Dolan and her assistant director, Judy Valencourt, to come before you and discuss the benefits of continued membership in Edco. And that may be beneficial to the deputy, the new deputy superintendent also. Could be a very beneficial meeting.
Ms. Scott?
I'm curious whether we still have Edco classrooms, classrooms being used by Edco programs?
We have one here, the Manville, well, it used to be called Manville School, now it's called Idea, no, it has, Edco Classroom Space? At the high school.
So there's still one?
So there's one program here that will be leaving next year. That's, that's not the issue. I think the, the fact that we're using the 45-day placement, we have not used any of their, except for the Deaf and Harder Hearing, I think, at one point, that, there's a program that they have in Newton that Edco supports. We haven't had, used their special education classes before, but I was, I'm encouraged to hear that we are. It is much less expensive than other 45-day placements, and quite good. So I think...
Do you want to, oh, sorry, I thought you were starting to say something. Yeah, sure, yeah. Dr. Schmuckler.
Karen, you may want to explain what a 45-day placement is, which is so unpredictable when we need those.
Sure. So, 45-day placement is either used for students who need stabilization, either because there's a mental health crisis or a family crisis, and also under the new Chapter 222 regulations, when students are suspended, have long-term suspensions or expulsions, districts are now required to be educating them. And so actually, we've used Edco for both stabilization when students have been younger, so we use our SLC now for our middle school students, but we've used Edco for stabilization, and we've also used Edco this year for interim alternative education placements for kids who've been suspended. And we've actually had, so this is the first year we've used them for four different students.
That's a lot.
There's approximately a savings of about $15,000 per student when you go to an Edco 45-day versus a, one of the private ones, depending on the type of services, if they need evaluations. So there is, there is a considerable savings to the district in terms of the membership piece on that. We, and we, the high school program, we have not, we have used that sporadically over the years, we do have a student there now who will move when the program moves with the, with the Edco program.
And one other possibility is we could ask Colleen and Judy to come in the, at the next, to the next meeting. I mean, that's, if you would feel more comfortable holding it and voting then, that would be fine, too.
If I may just quickly, Colleen and Judy, I'm very appreciative that Headmaster Holman made room for one more year at the high school. It was very fine, difficult, difficult for them to find space for that program, and we gave them one more year, which, Mr. Mason has changed the location of that program, what we've given space for one more year at the high school, and they're very, very appreciative. So I'm sure they'd be, they'd be very, very agreeable to come and talk, talk to you at any point in time.
I think these are two separate issues. One issue is do we, how do we feel about the change in the date, and whether it gives financial stability to Edco, and collaborative finances are always complicated and somewhat precarious, so, and what does it mean to all the rest of the member districts to absorb the impact on one district leaving and everyone else to do that? So that's one question. I think a different question is, does Brookline benefit from the Edco collaborative relative to the fees that we're paying? And so, at least for my part, on the first one, I'm very sensitive to precarious nonprofit finances, and so, to the extent that they feel like they need more lead time to be in a better position, and that that benefits all of the members, I don't have a problem with that personally. I think whether or not Brookline benefits from the Edco collaborative, whether our current deputies and teachers do, whether our new superintendent, new deputies will, I think that one, I'm perfectly willing to sort of follow staff recommendation and Dr. Connolly's recommendation of letting that go another year, let's see how it, let's see how it goes, and then we can make this decision a year from now, recognizing that then that will mean a second year after we've had this, this conversation going for a while. But anyway, that's where I come out on it.
I must say, the one thing that really encourages me is the fact that we do have students in the programs, because beyond the fact that, you know, there's, it's not, you can't quantify what the job alike groups are and the professional development, you can quantify the students, and we haven't had them in the past, so, that, you know, for me, at least for the next year, makes sense to continue. The other piece to, you know, have all the cards on the table is that Edco is also looking at, has commissioned a... Where am I looking for it? Thank you. Has commissioned a study on merging with two other collaboratives, Case and Lab, I think I mentioned this to you in the past, both of which have most of the same members that we have, but a few others, and a few others tend to be even further from Brookline, Burlington, Littleton, Harvard, and Maynard, I think. And we're going to be getting that report in June as to what the consultants think about this type of merger. There's different issues, monetary issues, you know, issues of, you know, space, issues of leadership, all those things that they're going to be looking at. So, that's, that's something that I will probably have for our last meeting, maybe that might be even the time for them to come, if you want, or next year.
Any further discussion? Okay, so it's been moved, seconded, no further discussion. All those in favor of the, what exactly did we say with the motion? Approval of the Articles of Agreement as amended. All those in favor? Okay, all those opposed? And abstentions? Technically, you don't call for abstentions, but for Ms. Stone's sake, I will call for abstentions. It's just whoever didn't vote. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Charlebsky.
You're welcome.
Thank you to our deputy superintendents and our teachers who've given us feedback on this. Thank you, Dr. Connolly, for your recommendation, and, and thank you, everyone, for a good discussion, and we will follow up in terms of sort of how to bring a clearer sense of the, you know, value to the Edco program and what it is that we'd be looking for over the next year to make, make that decision. Okay, we are unnaturally on schedule, which is exciting. Brooklyn High School Competency Determination Report for the class of 2016 and 2017. Our guests, Mr. Mason, Ms. Holman, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My pleasure, once again, to present our MCAS determination report for you. And once again, let me preface this, as I do, I believe, every year, by saying, we must remember that we're looking really closely at some of the questions that we have and some of the areas of concern, but we can't forget to look at the larger picture, the incredibly good job our kids and our teachers do, paired for MCAS in English, in math, and in physics. I'm not going to run through every slide, you have the packets, I think it'd be better that we take some questions, but just to give the brief update, here we see the general results, and 97% of our students scored proficient and advanced on the English exam last year. Some of those subgroups are indicated here on the small print, on the next page you have, and then we've broken out for you to see four-year comparisons for all students, again with the four categories. We have it also listed for students with disabilities, African-American students, Hispanic/Latino students, and this year, the state has changed their definition. Formerly, they had a comparison of low-income students, this year, they've changed it to economically disadvantaged students. They only have a one-year comparison, I assume they've changed in some way how they're calculating who's in that group, so they only have a one-year snapshot of that. In math, again, we remain pretty much the same, 93% of our students proficient and advanced, some of the subgroups saw a slight falloff in this area, but again, I have to caution you that in some cases, the N in some of the subgroups is relatively small, so you might see what could look like a substantial decrease in a percentage could be represented by one student. Same subgroups represented here for math, and in the four-year aggregate slides for math. And for science, again, overall, a slight improvement to 92% proficient and advanced, and again, some variance with the subgroups and the overall performance, but in general, pretty good. Same slides here for the science, of course. Our failure rate is, again, very small, we, we realized that it was more helpful to break out into tenths of a percent, especially when we're down at numbers that are so small, exactly what the numbers are for the failure on first testing for students, ELA, it's a 0.4%, it represents students taking the alt, the students who took the regular exam were 100% proficient, or 100% non-fallers, math 2.7%, and physics 2.4%. This slide's a little bit different than we presented it before, essentially just summarizing what we do with the retest. This, of course, is a major effort of how we remediate with kids who are struggling and who need help, or, in the case of the high school, many of the kids represented represent newly enrolled students, students from out of state, students from foreign countries, which, of course, we have a lot of, who come in every year, and then some previously tested BHS students who are taking the retests. In summary, most of those students were advanced to meet their determination, five of the students from that cohort that started as 38 in November still have to meet their determination. Helen?
So that's, it's a little confusing, and, because I think that... So that's, it's a little confusing and, because I think the numbers represent different students, if I'm reading it correctly.
They can represent different students, that's correct.
So, when you start out with twenty-seven newly enrolled students, are the seven students in the next retaking in March part of that twenty-seven, or are they seven new students?
They can be both. They are, they would be both. We have new students who move in and then we have a student that might not have passed the first time and therefore would be taking it a second time.
And so, the eight students could be either the previously tested students or the, the newly enrolled students?
Eight students.
In March.
That's a good question. I don't think that those would be the same. I think we would consider those kids who previously had taken the exam, in the regular cycle, but it, it might be the same. You're right, it could be.
Well, that, that's why I'm trying to figure out the next eight, too. Did eight students not pass each time and the same eight students?
Well, so February is only the biology.
Oh, biology, sorry. Take it back.
All that's coincidental if the numbers are the same. But, so those would be students that needed to take the retest in biology. Again, the, one of the issues that we have is that the retest is only available, continues only to be available for biology, even though many schools are running biology in the junior year. So we don't, there is no retest for physics. And of course, there's also the problem, unlike in math, where the skills would be redundant and you'd be learning relevant skills the following year in math. After you've taken physics, the following year, you're in the middle of chemistry and you're taking a year's worth of chemistry, therefore, it's difficult to repeat that test again. So it's just the nature of the science test that makes it tough and especially tough since they don't offer any retest other than biology, which our kids only take junior year.
Okay, then, just one other, I'm sorry that I'm sort of pushing you on this, but I'm just trying to understand it. You have eight students. So five students of all these, thirty-eight plus twenty-seven plus eleven? Or, of the thirty-eight, still haven't met? Is that correct?
Right, and at the end, we have five students.
In possibly just one of the...
So it's not five of thirty-eight? Isn't it, it's five of thirty, is it the last two, thirty?
It's five of, well, it would have started as thirty-eight and, but then the fifteen that's in the March test, some of those would have been redundant from the thirty-eight, some of them would have been new students. Fifteen, the bio, those would have also been, could potentially be redundant, they could potentially be, you know, we have seniors, for example, who arrive for their senior year and want to graduate in June, therefore, must take that biology test in February in order to meet the competency determination and graduate. So there's some of those kids in that class and, you know, it's, it's a real, it's a mix. So, the number's somewhat higher than thirty-eight that would have fallen into the retest. I don't have the exact number for you, but all told, from that cohort, you have five students who are still working to June.
Five students who have one to do, or some, do, some students have multiple?
I'm almost certain they've all passed the English. There's a few that are still working on the math and others who are working on the science.
Got it, okay, okay. Are they all seniors, or are they different grade levels?
Two of those students are seniors.
Okay, and so then those are the, the two that are filing for appeals on the next page?
Correct, correct. So this, this is the first time that I've ever given this report where I have to report that we are currently undergoing appeals for two of our students in order to get them to June. We are confident in some part, we are supporting the students as we can, we are, the students are still enrolled in the class that they need to be in, they'll be taking the MCAS or took the MCAS as part of their senior year. And we're hoping that with the support, with the tutoring that we're giving them, with the extra help that we're giving them and the classroom support that we're giving them, that they will graduate in June. But at this point, it is not a certainty.
Can you just explain the appeals process for people who aren't familiar, just broadly speaking, not details, but what it is?
Yeah, so you can file an appeal with the state, generally collecting work, collecting anecdotal reports from teachers, collecting cohort data. So you look for students that are a similar profile to that student, arrived in the school at the same time, took the same type of classes, what they did to distinguish how this student might compare to the cohort. And then there's some, there's a narrative that goes with it as well, and that's submitted to the state for, as a part of the appeal.
Very helpful, thank you.
The, the most important part would be the teacher, the teacher evaluation. The teacher, you know, in some cases, the state will allow the teacher, for a student that's close, to say, I am, in, in my professional judgment, this student has met the standard needed for needs improvement or proficient level in that, the course that I taught them.
Very helpful. Just to, just to be sure. So, among our senior class, like, these two students are the only students for whom MCAS will be a barrier to graduation? That's fully inclusive of...
As of right now, I mean, they're still seniors, they have to pass English and they have to, you know, get across the finish line.
Right, good.
But yes, as far as we know, the barrier to them graduating in June would be MCAS.
MCAS, okay.
And that, of course, going way back is the, is the origin of this report, when MCAS first came to the district to analyze what the impact of MCAS would be on students and was it affecting Brookline students adversely in terms of graduation? That goes back.
Dr. Jackson? Oh, sorry, Dr. Jackson.
Hi. So I want to go back to some of the data that you shared about the subgroups. I appreciate your reference and explanation to sort of like within subgroup changes, given the size of the numbers and, I'm more interested in trying to understand what's happening in physics. Specifically, physics.
What page are you on?
I am on page, science and math.
Okay.
It just strikes me that while you might make a case if it were true across all of the subject areas, that like, you can, there'd be a different explanation potentially if it were more true across all of them, that the gap between African-American students and others, and frankly, all others, were this way for all the other subject matter? But physics in particular seems to have something going on. And I would love your thoughts either about whether it's connected to the test and sort of when they created it and how we're, you know, how we're delivering physics, what, what is that about? Because that's dramatic.
Yeah, it's dramatic for each year. I, I, I mean, I know Deb has been working with EdWeiser and this has been a major point of concern for the school and a major point of emphasis with the science department to address this issue and to narrow that gap. I will point out that the numbers for last year, that the, the numbers are small, so it's a total of, I don't have the exact numbers here, thirty-six students of, in this case, we also have a much larger number this year, or percentage-wise, a larger number of students within that thirty-six who are students with some type of disability. So it's slightly skewed, the numbers, it, it would account for the variance between these numbers, but your point is still that the, the numbers for each of those years is substantially below the other subgroups and substantially below the school as a whole. And that's something that is of great concern to the school.
I think that's a non-satisfactory answer, but I appreciate your directness about what you do know and don't know.
So, since we know a year in advance the students that are coming through, are there other things, I mean, just, and when you say it's been a significant point of, of work that people have been working on, maybe we can just elaborate on that a little bit about what, what are the kinds of things we're trying to address it? And looking forward to upcoming classes, what, what kinds of things you and the science department have in mind?
Yeah, so let me talk about math and the science department. Math, first things that they have been working on this year that are similar to last year's and some new things. They have had, we have had consistently strong co-teaching teams at the standard level when we have co-taught classes, strong teams. Consistent inclusion in department learning of math teachers in Winthrop House and ACE, our alternative programs, and the Excel program, so that all of the math teachers get the professional learning and the collaboration. Consistent focus on time to establish relationships with kids who may not be as competent in math. Science is working on that also naturally. With math department meetings, Josh Paris, the coordinator, and Melanie Alexander, who is the teacher leader for Calculus Project this year, have done a good amount of co-facilitating exercises in department meetings on recognizing bias in teaching in math class. The collaboration time, Friday collaboration time, which is short but still very usable. Melanie, Alexander, Josh Paris and teachers in the Cal project meet to, are meeting to discuss specific student challenges, teacher moves and effective teaching, they have found that to be very useful. On the horizon for the math department, they are looking at how to make more effective use of after-school Calculus Project tutoring in order to get attendance more robust. Students are using it, but we want to increase the after-school use. Math department teachers have common assessments by grade level and the teachers are also using collaboration time there to look at common assessment data, look at instruction. They are also squeezing in a lot of other times throughout the week to meet and talk instruction, a lot of lunch meetings, for example. So that's math department. Science department doing a couple of similar things, consistently strong co-teaching teams at the standard level, consistent inclusion of our science teachers from our other programs in professional department learning. This year, the sci, and last year, the science content reading initiative teachers, that's content reading funded by the Twenty-First Century Fund. Those teachers in the science department have been using a good amount of department time to teach colleagues methods of decoding and making meaning, making meaning and better comprehension of science text from both textbook reading, science reading, and also MCAS open response questions. Science department time is dedicated to ninth-grade physics teachers, and this has been consistent for a number of years, looking at their MCAS data, where they're strong, where individual teacher students are strong, where individual teacher students are weak. And then sharing amongst the team what particular lessons are strong. So for example, there's a project-based unit used by two teachers over the last few years who you could trace their students did better on that particular topic on the MCAS physics score, test. So now, all the physics teachers are using that successful unit. Our ninth-grade physics team is in the first year this year of using their own pre-test and post-test, given in September, then in May, and that's to measure the impact of BHS ninth-grade curriculum and teaching. And it may offer some data on the, well, it may offer some important data on the impact of physics preparation in eighth grade, in fact, in which eighth grade school you're coming from. Another thing that we talked about last year is continuing, and that's the ninth-grade physics team continues to work with the eighth-grade science teachers and the coordinator on the right amount and type of, across all K-8 schools, of teaching physics concepts in eighth grade, because that varies now. I think the science department has some sense of being perplexed by the plateau of scores. They are scientists themselves, they create hypotheses about what's going on and test them, and certainly are continuing, we're continuing to move on that. But these teachers have looked at their instruction, they've looked at their scores and they will continue to do so, of course. But one thing that we know is that students who have some exposure in eighth grade to some physics preparation do better on MCAS. And so if our goal is higher performance on ninth-grade physics MCAS, then we need to continue to work with the eighth-grade teachers on teaching the right amount of physics in eighth grade, not having physics take over the eighth-grade curriculum. So those are some things that the physics team and the science department are doing. I think the other team, the other thing that we're working on across all departments, but we're really valuing it in math and physics and science, is we're, Hal and I are working with the curriculum coordinators on how to identify common planning blocks for all departments throughout the school, and that's actually harder than one would think with the complicated Brookline High School schedule. So that's a snapshot.
No, it's clear there's a tremendous amount of activity and, well, I think we'd all assume people really care about this, they see the data and they want to do something and clearly a lot's happening and it's just, the word perplexing is, anyway, I appreciate that, because it's, it's something a lot of people struggle with. Mr. Glover?
I was, I was wondering if we could, or if you have broken down the results by the, the sending elementary school or middle school? And if we haven't done that, could we do that without it being overly burdensome?
Yeah, good question. And we have done that. That's something that, that we've looked at. EdWeiser, Jennifer, the science coordinator, EdWeiser is the high school science coordinator and then the K-8 coordinator, we've, we've looked at that and continue to do so. It gives us some valuable information and that's where the pre and the post-test that I talked about is going to give us some information.
Could I ask you to provide that information to us as, not just with respect to science, but with respect to all of the MCAS results? Or is that...
Do you want to, Susan and Jennifer?
If I may add just this one point and then you, you might want to return to that, that in our K-8 scope and sequence in science, there is very little physics. And our K-8 learning expectations are aligned to the new next generation, next generation science standards. So, to Headmaster Holman's point earlier, we could actually go against our K-8 learning expectations and embed more physics in eighth grade if our goal is to make our MCAS scores higher. If we want to stay aligned with the national standards, which in fact, our K-8 coordinator was a part in reviewing, and it is the science content that we agree with in that scope and sequence, and we continue to question this, that's a different strategy. My recommendation is we figure out why in the world are African-American students consistently do so much, achieve at such a lower level than our, our white students? The, the state gap is about twenty-nine points. All right? Our gap is more. Is it about our kids take it in ninth grade and most other students across the state take it in tenth? I don't know, but this is a problem that rests with one particular subgroup and I can't say with greater humility, we don't know.
Mr. Glover, do you want to finish that, otherwise we'll move on?
I, I appreciate those sentiments and just, but shifting back, you know, I think looking at the middle schools as an additional piece of data, it may not show us anything. But, okay, I, I guess we, I would just like to know that information as well.
It shows us that when physics is taught in eighth grade, the students do better on MCAS in ninth. They get physics twice essentially. And it actually is extremely frustrating for the teachers at the high school because they introduce a unit and kids go, oh, we had that last year. And they get it again. It's a, it's, it's a philosophical question that, that honestly, you folks have to answer.
I, I agree with that. I, I, and this is maybe for Ms. Holman, I, I would just like to get that data for the, the school breakdowns.
By elementary schools?
By, by middle schools or elementary schools. Not just for science, but for all. If it's not, you tell me if it's a crazy ask and it's too difficult to do.
I feel like we've done that.
If it's, okay, yeah, if that could be packaged, yeah, that would be...
And are the numbers big enough to make sure they're not identifiable? For, for, for certain subgroups, when you get down to a subgroup and a grade level and a school, you get to identify, especially when you, if you take a, sorry, a subgroup like African-American, a particular grade level, a particular school, and then to like needs improvement, you actually get to small numbers very quickly. So I remember we have looked at these in the past and then decided to actually not look at them at the school committee level anymore. So you should just, anyway, just to add to Mr. Glover's comment, like, if there are trends that we should be looking at, that's fine, then we need to hear those. But anyway, we need, we need a little bit of dialogue on the, on the small numbers problem that personally did the file information.
That's a fair point.
Which relates to my comment on, we have to package it for you.
So I... Dr. Jackson, oh, sorry, can, okay, Ben, okay.
I just have a quick question. So, every single ninth grader has to take this physics? So when I'm looking at the African-American longitudinally, you had twenty-eight in twelve, thirty-five, thirty-seven, thirty-six, that's, so that's the entire ninth-grade African-American population, so it's a fairly small sample. Okay?
Some of the other groups are small also, so it's not...
I think that's the point. The point is that you would imagine that across the district, that people are or aren't getting physics, they are in eighth grade, right? And so I think it's the, it's the disparity that is... And so, I think it's the, it's the disparity that is striking. Dr. Jackson?
I have a clarifying question. You went through the work of the math department, and one of the first things that you referenced was work, I think you said, was being done around bias in teaching math. I didn't hear that repeated for bias in teaching science, and I'm curious if that work is being done with the science department as well.
It's, it's not. Josh Paris and Melanie Alexander started that with the math department this year, and I was in a couple of those department meetings. It was very well-received, very useful, the exercises that they went through, some of them were good, some of them they deemed weren't so good. So, that's something we want to push into the science department. So, yes.
Okay, someone over here, Michelle Ofsky.
Just to remind me again, they, the kids take the physics test when?
In June of ninth grade.
Okay, so they take it right after they've had the course?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I, I thought so, but then I thought, well, maybe, and the, oh, God, this is really going to show my ignorance. Do they have to pass science to graduate, or is just math and English?
Math, English, and science.
And science.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Dunn.
So, I guess this is a sort of a two-part question, and, and I fully understand if you can't answer it, but if we believe that our work through the Calculus Project is part of the explanation for why the trend is in the right direction on the math MCAS scores, does it make sense to think about, instead of adjusting the curriculum, which we don't want to do, to think about reinforcing physics in particular through the Calculus Project, which starts in the middle grades, as a way of contributing to the improvement in the scores without going against our inclinations curricularly over the course of the K through eight? Does that make sense, and have you thought about it?
It, it's a useful idea, it does make sense, Rebecca, totally. And we have thought about it, and that's in the, the thinking stage of how to, how to expand.
Ms. Tramm.
The other thing on, on the point about not adjusting the curriculum, my, my concern is not so much that the students specifically aren't doing well in physics, but that this represents an issue that's happening in science generally, which pushing physics back to eighth grade or other adjustments wouldn't necessarily solve. And so, I, I just want to state that as, as not wanting to, to change our curriculum just to solve this problem in particular, but to think about, is this representative of a more global problem?
I think, and, and I think that, Mr. Mason, one of the things that you had mentioned stuck in my head, and I was just trying to do some quick back-of-the-envelope math, which is dangerous, but, I mean, if, if it's true that on the science MCAS, that 42% of African-Americans are needs improvement or warning, which is sort of a different way to look at that number, 46% of students with disabilities are needs improvement or warning?
Right.
So, 42% for African-American, 46% for students with disabilities, and 37% for economically disadvantaged. So, one of the things that we've talked about in our Achievement Gap report is the fact that some of these things are true for multiple, some students meet multiple definitions. And so, if it's 42%, 46%, 37% for those, just three, I mean, I, I think we just need to look at race in particular, but we also need to look at some of the intersectionality of some of these issues because there are multiple effects going on.
And I've done that specifically for the science and, or for all the tests. And if you took African-American students who were not also in the category of having a disability, their advanced and proficient passing would be 82% with zero failures. So, it's a pretty significant.
So, sorry, African-Americans, if they don't have a disability or not, or not characterized as a disability or, and not characterized as low-income?
No, I didn't say low-income.
Oh, sorry, just disability?
Correct.
Just disability, okay. That 82% are advanced and proficient? Okay.
82%, correct.
Okay, so it would be 18% on the other side are needs improvement, warning feeling? Okay, right. I just think there's something about the intersectionality that it's hard, I mean, look, this is a, this is an MCAS determination report, you've got two kids on appeals, that's the point of this presentation, but almost every time you give us information like this, we dig in, so, so we appreciate your.
Right, and so, we create that same information for the other tests as well. And again, it's sort of the same pattern, that there's a fairly, you know, a sizable percentage of the students that are identified are also listed as students with disabilities, and that the, the numbers are pretty significantly different.
Mr. Conley, did you, were you waving? Did you want to ask a question?
I guess the question I have is, if you look at physics again, if you break it up by teacher, because there aren't that many physics teachers, is it fairly similar, the rates of people, students getting advanced, proficient, needs improvement, warning?
I like how you're kneeling there. You don't look comfortable, but well done. I don't ha- we do look at that, I don't have that data for this year off the top of my head. What I do know is that it varies from year to year because students change from year to year, but that is something that the department head looks at with his faculty and, and tracks and works with the faculty if there are some trends that need addressing.
And do you know if, are there teachers that are consistently do better? And do they try and share like, whoever, like, whoever they're doing that works so well?
Yeah, so that's one of the things that I mentioned with the project-based lesson that for the last couple of years, a few teachers have done, and then when we track the scores of their kids on that particular unit on MCAS, the students scored better. Now, all of the teachers in the physics program are using that project-based unit. So, there is that sort of tracking and sharing of information and sharing of teaching instructional methods.
Dr. Jackson?
Mr. Mason, can you just say, given you did the calculation that got to that 80, I think you said 82%?
Yes.
Number, what is the percentage of these 36 students who are African-American who are receiving an IEP or are labeled as?
Of the 36, 23 are not students with disabilities.
This may be getting too much into the weeds, I mean, really too much into the weeds, but there's something I don't understand. I look at the gender, male and female, and their, in physics, in science, 4% altogether, 3% of males and 1% of females. Ah, never mind, it's not, it's not a number, it's a percentage. Okay, never mind, it works.
Okay. Any further questions?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, any other questions on the competency determination piece of this? I mean, I think that, you know, we, clearly, the, the notion of how we understand information is, is complicated, and these are, you know, high-level numbers that look at an entire cohort and clearly drilling down into specific kids and what they need, and, and to be successful is, is the more important work. I think this is, I, I don't think anybody on this committee would say that the MCAS numbers are the end-all, be-all, it's just a very useful point-in-time comparison. So, it's not about optimizing to the test, it's about what's going on with some of the disparity and what's going on with the knowing of each kid and, and the education of each kid. So, anyway, thank you for this, we appreciate it, and we will continue to have the conversation about the overall achievement gaps at various levels and by various subgroups in other venues as well. Okay, Agenda Item 7B, Dr. Conley.
This agenda item, we're still gathering information, I request it be tabled for, until our next meeting.
Okay, do you want to just say what we're going to talk about at the next meeting?
Well, we hope to talk about the, there were a number of incidents this year that required administrative response, and we, our intention is to report on not only the incident, but more importantly, the, the follow-up and response and how we reach out to the kids to try to address some of their concerns. At this point, we're still gathering information.
One of the things I appreciated about the 21st Century Fund session last night was, you know, how, how difficult it can be to talk about, you know, incidents, especially with respect to race, and so, one of the things I heard over and over again, and others were there, might share their thoughts as well, is how important it is to acknowledge that it's hard to talk about racial incidents, but please still talk about them. And so, clearly, nothing that can come to this committee, because we're a public body, should be identifying of individual students in any way, and so, we appreciate that, you know, that, that level of detail or, or things that are personnel matters, and that level of detail can't, are not public or appropriate for the public. But I very much do appreciate the attempt to pull all the different pieces together into just one place so that we can, we can talk about them as a group. And much, most of this has already been reported on in, in the press or in emails or whatnot, so I suspect there may or may not be a lot of new information, but even just having it in one place and talking about not only sort of what happened, but what we learned and what we, what we, what we did, what we think worked and didn't work, what we learned, what we would want to do next time, I think just the, that, that moment would be, would be great. So, thank you very much for, for, for that, Dr. Conley.
I think when we do give you the report, you'll be very impressed with some of the actions that took place, how we, we involved these students in, in the planning and discussions of these issues, and it's, I think Ethan was, was part of some of these discussions where, for example, our next November's All-Day Professional Development Activity, as a result of some of these activities at the high school, these sit-ins and these, these demonstrations, we had some very, very rich conversations with the kids. And what led, what, what came out of that is we, the kids will not only be involved in the planning of this very important day next, next year, but they may very well participate in that day's activity. And as you know, the November 8th All-Day Professional Development Day is, is going to be devoted to racial awareness and racial sensitivity, and we're hoping these kids will not only be, be involved in the planning, but they're, they're actually very anxious to participate. So, these, we, we'll have some great things to share with you when the report's ready.
So, I appreciate that. I also, it's, it's struck me that since Election Day this year will be potentially more adventurous than maybe anyone had anticipated when we set the calendar. I, I appreciate, and I recall the, the BEU wanting Election Day to be the day of this professional development workshop, but it's also clear that to the extent that, depending on how the, not, the conventions turn out, I very much appreciate that we may have a large number of teachers who would like to be politically active on that day and not be in a, in a workshop on race. And so, I think it's just worth making sure that somewhere between the president of the BEU and your office, that there is a dialogue about that and ensuring that this is an incredibly important professional development day, and if anything in anyone's thinking has changed about whether or not we will have a robust attendance by teachers at this day because of any other things they might want to be doing on that day, I just, I would like confirmation that, that it will be well-attended and that that's still the intent of, of everyone, if that makes sense.
I think this election day date is a test date, and we'll watch it very closely this coming November. And if we feel that the attendance dropped off because of the conflict with, with the elections, we'll reconsider the date.
Okay.
By all means.
Ms. Ofsky.
You mentioned just before the event you went to last night, and I'm wondering if you could just, for those of us who weren't able to go, if you could tell us a little, or anybody else who was there, if you could tell us about, about it?
I'm happy to. Does anybody else want to? I think we've been talking a lot. Mr. Pollak? Mr. Dr. Conley was there, it was a very robustly attended, I'm curious on others' reflections.
So, the, the event was a, was called the World Cafe. It was sponsored by the 21st Century Fund, and it was a opportunity to, to, to have conversations with a range of, of, of community members. It was very well-attended by, there were high school students there, there were parents, there were teachers, administrators, there were, there were people, members of the school committee and the school administration and the board of selectmen and a lot of other town employees. It was very well-attended. And we moved from cafe table to cafe table, talking about a series of questions about our community, about diversity, inclusion, challenges, and, and responsibilities. One of my takeaways, one that I was thinking about a moment ago when Susan was, was recalling the evening, was that the, the moderator, John Lang, thank you very much, one of the things that he said about the evening was as a suggestion or a hope that one of the advantages in stepping forward and engaging in difficult conversations is that they are difficult, and because of that, we all tend to carry a hesitancy about them, to worry about them, and to, to, to distance ourselves from that engagement just in, in a very natural way. And so, and he didn't use the word practice, it's a, it's a word I'm very fond of, but, but, so just the practice, in, in my own word, of engaging, of stepping forward, whether it's in, in an evening in the World Cafe at the, at the Schlunt's Gym or, or anywhere else, but of the exposure of the, and the active listening and the patience that's involved in, in being open to hearing what other, other people from other backgrounds and points of view have to say is a practice that will hopefully make having those conversations easier and just in that way broaden the circle and improve communication and acceptance in our community, so.
Well said, David. My, my takeaway was that I was very impressed with everyone's sincere involvement in the activity. They wanted the activity to succeed, they were very honest, very sincere about their comments. It was a great opportunity to meet new people and talk about some very, very important, difficult topics, but in a very supportive environment. The tone in this large gymnasium, there must have been 20 tables of 10, was an extremely positive tone. You could sense the tone, the room was just very positive, and I, I just have to commend 21st Century Fund for, for doing this, and it's one of a series of three activities this year, and I, my takeaway is it should be more of these type of activities, it was just very, very uplifting.
Ms. Scotter?
I absolutely agree with everything that was said. It was a very interesting series of conversations that took place. One wished, in some cases, that you could continue longer to talk to the group that you were with. But the one, one thing that I would say is that the people who chose to come were, for the most part, people who were willing to have these conversations. The real challenge is how to move beyond the group of people who are comfortable and willing to have the conversations and open it up to more people who feel, who feel they may not have anything to say or who feel threatened by the conversations. I think to me, that is, that's what needs to happen, and I think it's a hard step.
Just one final comment on what Barbara just said. I think the moderator had a great idea last night. He said, at the future activities, if everyone invited one person to come with them, you'd involve more people, and it would expand, it would expand from event to event. It was a great idea.
I, I think events like this are very. I think events like this are very, to strike a balance between making people feel comfortable enough and safe enough to have a difficult conversation and recognizing that when you're actually having a difficult conversation, sometimes it doesn't feel comfortable. And so I think it's really, really hard to do that well. And I think that last night was a more comfortable version of the conversation, so I think it got people talking. But I think it's also hard because when we all collectively, lots of people would collectively look at difficult gap data, difficult data on incidents, you know, how do we have a conversation that's comfortable enough for people to speak and not feel threatened, but also uncomfortable? Because unless it's uncomfortable, we're not going to change. So I just feel like it's very, very hard to do both of those things. And, and I appreciate, one of the things I really appreciate about what you kind of gave us this evening was just the idea of, here's the issue that we're looking at, here's some things we don't have, here are some things we still want to do. I think that's a, it's a very nice tone, knowledge that there's, you know, we're all looking at data in a certain way, and we're trying to do things, and there's more that needs to get done, and we're perplexed, and we're still trying to figure it out. And anyway, so it's, it's very hard to strike that balance in terms of tone. And I think the more we can talk about it, the more we can normalize it, so it doesn't have to be that every conversation about race is so terrifying for people. Because that was the other thing I took away from it, which is as hard as it is for people of color to talk about race and, and issues of, you know, of bias and inclusion and equity, it seems that often people are even more terrified. And so I think that came out loud and clear last night as well. When we talk about, what is the difference, Dr. Jackson, between diversity and equity, that came up and a number of other, of other topics like that, and how we maintain our positive self-concept as a town, but also recognize that there are really serious things that we all have to deal with that aren't, that aren't going the way they need to be going. And so just striking that tone. So, anyway, one of the last questions was, what can you do from your role, wherever you are? Yeah, what's your responsibility? Yeah, exactly, your responsibility. And there were, as David said, selectmen, town administrator, town council, advisory committee members, town meeting members. It was really kind of a remarkable, chief of police, remarkable group of people, you know, us, obviously, remarkable group of people. And so I think it's a really interesting question, and us thinking about what we can do from our role. Oh, yep, headmaster, of course.
Yeah, thank you for all that, Susan. I agree. And I need to give a kudos to Brookline High Parents, 21st Century Fund, and the PTO because this series of three events grew out of their interest last year of our Asking for Courage Day in March 2015. And the parents on school council and the PTO and the 21st Century Fund would come to me after that and say, "My kid couldn't stop talking at the dinner table or the next day about the Asking for Courage Day. In what way can parents at home extend the conversation?" And so we brainstormed and came up with a combination of PTO and the fund, Spring Forum, and let's, let's have the conversation in a multi-part way. So really proud of the BHS parents for that, just wanted to say that.
During the last conversation at the table at which I was sitting, a parent said, "I wish we could have something that would be like Race 101." And I said, "This is what we have done at the school committee." And she thought that, and, you know, I told her what had happened. And that's really something that parents at Brookline High, I think, and throughout the town would appreciate, a similar kind of, a similar kind of program where someone came and really did a presentation and then had the conversation along with that. Because there was no presentation last night, it was just conversation. But the presentation that was done here conveyed a lot of information to people who didn't already know it. So there, I, some parents are looking for that, is simply all I can say.
I think there is a real hunger for what do we need to be doing differently, kind of collectively? Can we all look at this and be doing things differently? Because we're still seeing things that we don't, we don't want to be seeing. So how do we, how do we all need to be different? All right, well, we didn't end up doing the update on the response to actions, but we'll do that in a couple of weeks, and we talked about something else instead. Is there any new business? We're actually right on time, which is, it's a new day. Any new business? All right. All right. Do we have a need for an executive session? No?
Do you want one?
Um, no, I don't want an executive session. Does anyone else want an executive session? All right, we have no need for an executive session, then we are, then we are adjourned. Thank you very much.